All right, everybody. It is 7:00 PM and I would like to call this meeting to order. While this meeting is being held in person, we also offer the option to participate through Zoom if preferred. Instructions on how to participate virtually are included in the City Council Calendar item listed on the front page of missionks.org. Please stand and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Robin, please call the roll.
Hayden Chumposi.
Here.
Von.
Here.
Ryan.
Here.
Loudon.
Here.
Kring.
Here.
Schmidt.
Here.
Carpenter Davis.
Here.
Josie.
Here.
Okay, we do have the need for a revised agenda for tonight's meeting, so I would entertain a motion to approve our revised agenda.
Mayor, I move the City Council approved the revised May 21st, 2025 Agenda as printed.
Second.
Motion second, any discussion? Seeing none, Robin, please call the roll.
Loudon.
Aye.
Schmidt.
Aye.
Josie.
Aye.
Von.
Aye.
Hayden Chumposi.
Aye.
Carpenter Davis.
Aye.
Kring.
Aye.
Ryan.
Aye.
Mission Case.
All right, we have two public hearings this evening. The first is related to the Community Improvement District Petition for 5101 Johnson Drive. I will now officially open the public hearing. Laura, will you please begin your presentation?
Yes, thank you, Mayor and Council. As you all are aware, the owner and developer of the 1.9, approximately 1.9 acre property located at 5101 Johnson Drive, which is the southwest corner of Johnson Drive and Roland Drive, submitted formal applications to the city for consideration of the following incentives: Tax Increment Financing, or TIF, a Community Improvement District, or CID, and Industrial Revenue Bonds, or IRBs, for the purpose of a sales tax exemption on construction materials. The city's team, our financial advisor, Mr. Bruce Kimmel, who is with us virtually this evening, our bond counsel, Gilmore and Bell, Mr. Wempe and Ms. Perez are in the back of the room, and staff have been working with the developer and his team for several months to negotiate recommendations for the council's consideration. Tonight, we'll hold two public hearings as required by state statute. The first on the Tax Increment Financing, or TIF, redevelopment project plan, and then on the Community Improvement District Petition. No public hearing is specifically required for the IRBs. While most of the project details are going to relate to the project as a whole, we are required to conduct the public hearing separately, so that may feel a little awkward as we move through these next stages. But the majority of the presentation from both staff and the developer will be covered in this first public hearing, just knowing that there may be some duplication and overlap in the presentations. So, local developer Dan Carr of US Federal Properties acquired that property at 5101 Johnson Drive late 20, in 2024. Property was last occupied by the Wild Oats Grocery Store and has been vacant for nearly two decades. The property is located in an existing TIF district that was originally established in 2005, 2006, and then amended in 2019. The developer submitted a Tax Increment Financing Redevelopment Project Plan in February of this year outlining his intent to redevelop and renovate the existing structure into a revitalized retail center for one or more tenants. The redevelopment project plan was presented to the Planning Commission at their March 24th, 2025 meeting, as is required by state statutes, and the Planning Commission found it to be in conformance with the city's tomorrow-together 2040 Mission Comprehensive Plan. Tonight's public hearing was called by a resolution adopted at the April 16th, 2025 City Council meeting. Since the project includes renovation of an existing structure rather than new construction, land acquisition is the only TIF-eligible expense that the developer is seeking reimbursement for as a part of the redevelopment project plan. The request has been made for ad valorem tax revenues only. In TIF, you do have the option of looking at TIF sales tax revenues as well. As we looked at the financial analysis of this, because the project is expected to generate a relatively small tax increment over the 20-year period, the City Council may reasonably decide to reimburse the developer a larger percentage of the TIF. In this case, it's been recommended at 100% than you might otherwise. In most of our recent TIF deals on our multifamily projects, we've looked at some degree of TIF revenue sharing. The developer is also seeking the creation of a Community Improvement District, which would impose an additional 2% retail sales tax on eligible sales occurring on the site. Review by our financial advisor suggests that, in this case, the 2% CID is not unreasonable, especially in light of the fact that the proposed CID sales tax would be self-imposed by the developer and its tenants. And as you are aware, the consideration of CID sales taxes often depart from that of other sort of public incentives. A draft redevelopment agreement has been provided, was reviewed at the May 7 Finance and Administration Committee meeting, and that is the document that includes all of the terms recommended by the city's team and agreed to by the developer's team as it relates to the details of the project. The development agreement is the document that outlines any specific terms and conditions of this deal and ultimately becomes the contract between the developer and the city. In that redevelopment agreement, we have established development timelines, the formulas and process for dispersing any public incentives which might be granted, as well as specific outlines for events and/or remedies of default. One revision, since the council heard the presentation and reviewed the draft redevelopment agreement at the May Finance and Administration Committee meeting relates to timing of the effective date of the TIF project plan. Originally, we had presented that to take effect upon adoption of the ordinance or publication of the ordinance, which would be in a relatively short timeframe following this meeting, should you choose to approve that ordinance. We are requesting both staff and the developer that that be amended to make the effective date January 1st of 2026. That will align it with the effective date of the Community Improvement District and allows the start of the 20-year TIF clock and the 22-year CID clock to begin at the same time. As discussed at the May Finance and Administration Committee meeting, the developer is still negotiating with potential tenants, and as such, specific leases have not yet been made available to the city. The draft redevelopment agreement is seeking to provide the developer with an appropriate level of incentives to pursue quality tenants for the project. With that, I'd like to pause and invite Mr. Vince Kuzi to make a presentation on behalf of the developer, and Mr. Carr is here in the audience with us this evening.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Laura, can I get the presentation on the screen? Tech guy. Perfect. Do you want to wait for, we're good to go? So, good evening, Mayor and Council. My name is Vince Kuzi. I'm with Paul Staley Law Firm, and tonight I'm here on behalf of Mission 101, and Mr. Dan Carr is with us as well. I'll try to be brief, as I know many of you have already seen this presentation from my partner Kurt Peterson, as Laura alluded to, at the May 7 Finance Administration Committee meeting. Next slide, please. As you'll see here, a quick rundown, 5101 Johnson Drive, there at the corner of Johnson and Roland, the former Wild Oats Grocery Store, approximately 22,000 square foot building. As Laura said, it's been vacant for a very, very long time, as many of you are aware. Next slide, please. Next slide, please. Thank you. So, our vision here is to demise this building into two separate spaces. The larger space, what we'll call Tenant A, about 13,000 feet. The remaining space, roughly 9,200 feet. We've been in hot pursuit of a tenant for months now. As Laura alluded to, those negotiations are still ongoing. But it's envisioned at this time where the regional brewpub tenant would take the Tenant A space, the larger of the two spaces, and another tenant would take the Tenant B space. We have focused our efforts on pursuing Tenant A this time, so no substantive updates as to what would fill the Tenant B space at this time. Next slide, please. Thank you. There's a rendering looking south from Johnson Drive. As you can see, the space labeled brewery is where the brewery would go, and the other space labeled tenant is the smaller 9,000 square foot space. Next slide, please. Got it. That's another revised elevation when looking west. As you can see, the brewery space wraps around the side of the building, has a nice overhang, outdoor seating, game area. It's really, really cool rendering, it's really nice design. Next, please. Thank you. And finally, as Laura alluded to again, we are asking for three separate tools: Tax Increment Financing, which is capture of the property tax increment only, a CID, additional 2% sales tax, and an Industrial Revenue Bonds for a sales tax exemption on our construction materials, and since this is renovation, labor is included there as well. Next slide, please. Thank you. And finally, this is the sources and uses of the project. As you can see, we're asking for TIF reimbursement in the amount of roughly $600,000 and CID reimbursement in the amount of roughly $978,000. And with that, we stand for any questions anyone may have.
All right. We will, Laura, do we have anyone else on our team?
I would say if you, before we look or take public comments, I would, I know there are some additional comments or questions I had from council, which I've been able to talk through with the developer, and so I'd like to incorporate those now before we open up the rest of the session.
Sounds good. Thank you.
Thank you. So I know, following some of our recent presentations over the last several months, council had submitted some thoughts and ideas generally related to sustainability and some of the other initiatives that have been important to the council as we've looked at in TIF deals. Had the opportunity to share those with the developer and his team, and I would like to run through those just kind of quickly with some initial updates. And again, Mr. Kuzi, if I misspeak or miss something, can respond as well. One of the things that was mentioned was rooftop solar. Because this is intended to be a triple net lease situation for the tenants, meaning the tenants would be responsible for the utilities, the developer, I think, intends to make the rooftop solar ready for the tenants who might wish to pursue the installation of solar. We looked at the installation of EV charging infrastructure. I think they've evaluated that. I think there were some concerns around the costs associated with that, as well as the timeframe within which visitors to these tenant spaces would be anticipated to stay, would not likely be most conducive to those EV charging stations. I think we are certainly continuing to research and evaluate EV charging in that area, whether it's associated at our Park and Ride or other locations. Stormwater best management practices and landscaping would be something that would be addressed through the site plan, and we can certainly look at those options. A contribution to the Martway bike or pedestrian road diet, again, one of the things that we touched on briefly recently is the fact that there are tax increment financing revenues that have been accumulating within that district since it was formed back in 2005, 2006, and those could be dollars that could potentially be made available, both from this parcel and others along the Martway corridor when we prepare to make those improvements in 2027. Pedestrian and bike amenities, and Justin, if you would mind, if you can pull back up the presentation. And let's look at some of the site, some of the rend. Okay, so this, this in particular, I believe, so, okay. So this would be the west face of the building, so looking at the building from Roland Drive, East Salvation looking west, you can kind of see there's steps down and some railings, and that's where bike racks and those types of amenities would be planned at that location. You can see additional street trees also on this rendering. That was another question we had that would be incorporated along the perimeter. Rear wall activation, so the southern face of the building, this one, and I honestly missed it in the first presentation, but that tree, the last tree that you see is actually a mural painted on the building as opposed to a tree. And so I think we've had some conversations about the potential to expand that or wrap that around the southern exposure or activate that wall in some fashion. Connectivity, there was a question about sidewalks to the transit center. There are currently no sidewalks on the south side of this property as it would connect to the transit center, but along the Johnson Drive frontage, there are sidewalks, and I think we talked about making sure that we had that connectivity and maybe even some wayfinding or directional signage there. And then ultimately, potentially trail-oriented programming, which would be largely dependent, I think the developer is certainly open to that, but again, largely dependent on who the tenant may be. So. Anything I missed? Okay.
Okay, we will now open it up for public comment. So if there are any members of the public that would like to make a comment on the Community Improvement District Petition for 5101 Johnson Drive, now would be the time. If you are participating through Zoom, please either add your comment in the chat feature, and it will be read out loud, or note that you would like to speak, and we will call on you shortly to make your comments verbally. Please remember your comments or questions are visible to everyone in the meeting. If you are part of our in-person group tonight, please raise your hand but stay seated, and we will call on you to come to the lectern to make your comments. When you make your comment, please state your name and city of residence for the record. Also be conscientious of others trying to speak and speak slowly and clearly. If I need to confirm something that may have been difficult to hear, I will ask for clarification. Justin, any public comments online? Comments from our audience tonight? Seeing none, I will now formally close the public hearing on the Community Improvement District Petition for 5101 Johnson Drive. This item will be voted on later in our meeting agenda tonight. Our second public hearing this evening is related to the Division of Rock Creek Redevelopment District 3B and a TIF redevelopment project plan also for 5101 Johnson Drive. I will now officially open the public hearing. Laura, do you have an additional presentation?
Just a few additional comments, Mayor. As I mentioned, most of these details of the project specifics are relevant as it relates to both the Community Improvement District and the Tax Increment Financing incentives. One thing that I did not mention previously is that this project is anticipated to be a pay-as-you-go project, which means the developer is reimbursed as their eligible expenses are certified and as those revenues become available to the city. The, based on an analysis that was completed by our financial advisor, that pay-as-you-go, based on the project budgets that were shared previously, equals about 13.2% of the developer's total estimated project budget of approximately $12.1 million. I think generally, I would touch just briefly that you mentioned that the consideration of this and an ordinance which will be considered later on your agenda would divide the Rock Creek Redevelopment District 3B into two redevelopment districts. You may recall that as we have approved other TIF project plans in this area, we have carved out, there's a larger TIF District 3, and we have carved out 3A, 3B, 3C. This would now become Redevelopment District 3D. And as a part of that, the council's action in consideration of the ordinance would also approve the draft redevelopment agreement as presented. And with that, I really don't have any less, again, be happy to answer council questions, but I think that hits the highlights of what is being proposed and recommended to you this evening.
Okay, we'll open it up for public comment again. If there are any members of the public that would like to make a comment on the Division of Rock Creek Redevelopment District 3B and a TIF redevelopment project plan for 5101 Johnson Drive, now would be the time. Again, if you are participating through Zoom, please either add your comment in the chat feature, and it will be read out loud, or note that you would like to speak, and we will call on you shortly to make your comments verbally. Please remember your comments or questions are visible to everyone in the meeting. If you are part of our in-person group tonight, please raise your hand but stay seated, and we will call on you to make, to come to the lectern to make your comments. When you make your comment, please state your name and city of residence for the record. Also be conscientious of others trying to speak and speak slowly and clearly. If I need to confirm something that may have been difficult to hear, I will ask for clarification. Justin, any hands online? Don't see any hands in our audience here. Either council, any comments or questions for Laura or the developer at this time? Seeing none, I will now formally close the public hearing on the Division of Rock Creek Redevelopment District 3B, and it's the TIF redevelopment project plan for 5101 Johnson Drive. This item will be voted on later in our meeting agenda tonight. We do have many special presentations this evening. The first is a proclamation recognizing Friday, June 6th, as National Gun Violence Awareness Day. Gun violence is now the number one cause of death of American children ages 0 to 18 years old, and the National Center for Disease Control, CDC, has defined gun violence as a public health epidemic. Communities across the nation, including Mission, are working to end senseless gun violence. Protecting public safety in the community is local government's highest responsibility, and Mission is proud to join the campaign by encouraging citizens to wear orange on the first Friday in June to help raise awareness about gun violence and honor the lives of gun violence victims and survivors. We renew our commitment to reduce gun violence and pledge to do all we can to keep firearms out of the wrong hands and encourage responsible gun ownership to help keep our children safe. Tonight, we are joined by Katie Mangelsdorf from Moms Demand Action to accept this proclamation. Do you have any remarks you would like to make? Come on up. Yeah.
Thank you, Mayor Flora and Council. My name is Katie Mangelsdorf. I'm a resident of Lenexa, but I have close ties to Mission. Councilmember Kring is my kid's grandmother, so. Wear orange is a time for everyone in our community to come together to show our collective power in addressing gun violence. When high school student Hadiya Pendleton was shot and killed in 2013, her friends turned their grief into action and wore orange to raise awareness about gun violence. This June marks the 11th year we're coming together to wear orange and take action, and this is my third year working with the city of Mission on this proclamation. On June 6th, 7th, and 8th, we'll honor all lives taken and injured by gun violence as part of National Gun Violence Awareness Day, commemorated every year on the first Friday in June. Then throughout the weekend, we'll continue to turn Johnson County orange as we bring together all members of our community to show our solidarity as we work to prevent gun violence. You can join us for our Wear Orange event Saturday, June 7th at 9:00 AM for our KC Metro Wear Orange Rally. All are welcome, and this event will honor survivors and raise awareness about the work of gun violence prevention happening in our community. We'll rally at Harmon Park in Prairie Village. We'll hear from a variety of speakers from both Kansas and Missouri, and following the rally, we'll march to the Prairie Village shops. Don't forget to wear orange. We're going to show the power of orange, and we're counting on you to be with us in Johnson County. Thank you.
Thank you so much. All right, our second presentation tonight is a proclamation which designated May 11th, May 17th, 2025 as National Police Week. Each May, our nation salutes the men and women who put their lives on the line every day to maintain public safety. On Peace Officers Memorial Day and during Police Week, we not only mourn the heroes taken from us because they chose to serve, we also recognize all who have dedicated their lives to this important work. Our law enforcement officers have tough jobs, regularly working in dangerous and difficult, highly tense situations, often facing challenges deeply rooted in systemic problems and broader social issues. Mission is committed to ensuring our dedicated police officers receive the support and recognition they have earned. Chief Madden, would you please come forward to accept the proclamation and pass along the council's thanks and appreciation for the work the men and the women of the Police Department, Mission Police Department do every day? Thank you, Chief.
Yeah.
Oh, would you like a?
Just. Yes. Turn my ground down. Sit down here. Thank you. Yeah.
Okay, our next presentation is a proclamation recognizing May as Building Safety Month in the city of Mission. Building Safety Month is sponsored by the International Code Council to remind the public about the critical role the largely unknown guardians of public safety within our communities, our local code officials. These are the people who assure us of safe, efficient, and livable buildings that are essential to the health and economic vitality of Mission. Mission is pleased to observe Building Safety Month, asking our residents to consider the commitment to improve building safety and economic investments at home and in the community, and to acknowledge the essential service provided by local and state building departments, fire prevention bureaus, and federal agencies in protecting lives and property. Brian, would you please come forward to accept the proclamation? All right, our next proclamation tonight, recognize Saturday, May 17th, as Kids to Parks Day. This is a day that empowers families to embrace what they can do outdoors at America's parks, public lands, and waters, while encouraging kids to lead a more active lifestyle. In honor of Kids to Parks Day, our Parks and Recreation Department hosted their annual Kids to Parks Day event on Saturday, May 3rd, at the Powell Community Center. Our Parks and Recreation staff work hard throughout the year to promote the benefits and rewards of an active lifestyle. Penn, will you please accept the proclamation on behalf of your staff? Picture?
Oh, yes. Well, you're going way too fast. Brian thought he got away with it.
Don't worry, we're still going. All right, 2020, our final proclamation, sorry, of the night proclaims May 18th to 2024, 2025, as National Public Works Week. Public works professionals focus on infrastructure, facilities, and services that are vital to creating sustainable and resilient communities and to the high quality of life and well-being of our Mission residents. These dedicated professionals are responsible for rebuilding, improving, and protecting important infrastructure facilities that are essential for our community. 2025 marks the 65th Annual National Public Works Week, sponsored by the American Public Works Association, and Mission joins with the APWA officials in urging all citizens to pay tribute to our public work staff and to recognize the substantial contributions they make to protecting our health, safety, and quality of life. To celebrate Public Works Week, Mission Public Works will be hosting an open house event on Thursday, May 22nd, from 5:00 to 7:00 PM, so tomorrow night, and has invited the public to come tour their facilities, learn more about the equipment they use, and meet their team. Stephanie, will you please come forward to accept this proclamation for your department and pass along council's appreciation for your staff, to your staff for their dedication and commitment to serving all of our residents and businesses in Mission? All right, our next special presentation will be an update to the governing body for Mission Sustainability Commission, including review of their strategic plan, successes from the past year, programs they continue to focus on, and their plans for the upcoming year. We are joined tonight by Josh Thede, current Chair of the Sustainability Commission, as well as other Sustainability Commission members, who I don't know if they're going to also join in the presentation or be recognized. Come on up, Josh.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I am truly honored to be here tonight, speaking on behalf of the Sustainability Commission. I'm Josh Thede, the current Chair of this group. It's a huge opportunity to present, and we appreciate this opportunity to engage with you. We are an advisory body for you, and tonight, we're going to talk about what we've done in the past year and our plans for the future. First off, a huge thank you to our two council liaisons. Councilmember. Councilmember Hayden Chalpozi and Councilmember Loudon appreciate your attendance at our meetings and relaying information back and forth to this body. We also appreciate our staff liaison, Justin Carroll. I want to recognize our past Sustainability Commission Chair Lauren Reiterschmid, who passed the torch to me. And we now have a new Vice Chair, Alexa Root. Also, for the Sustainability Members in the audience, everybody, so you know who you are. Thank you for being here. And to the Mayor and Council, we truly appreciate you keeping our appointments full and keeping this an excellent group. Next slide, please, the, or the goals is good. We set out every two years and do a Sustainability Commission Retreat where we set goals. And we came up with these five goals for twenty twenty four and twenty twenty five. The first one is about climate action and partnering with the city to support our climate action goals. The second one is about advocating for sustainability best practices. The third one is about increasing awareness of sustainability, and all three of the Ps, the planet, people, and prosperity, expanding our view of sustainability and awareness. Number four is about resident and business, businesses adopting the best practices and sustainable best practices. And five is about retaining expertise within our Sustainability Commission and continuous learning. In twenty twenty four, we've got a lot of different successes to report on. I think one of the biggest ones is Sustainability Commission getting out of their silo and partnering with many other groups within the city. We participated in the Climate Action Task Force, the various bike and pedestrian task force that happened. And once a quarter, we go back and forth to the PRT, the Parks, Recreation, and Tree Commission, who you hear from soon. One of the ideas that came out of that PRT collaboration is the Tree Yourself Mission Tree Drive, which was wildly successful. And just huge kudos to the collaboration between our two groups. The next item on our list is the Go Green Environmental Fair, and this is an environmental fair hosted in Mission annually now that is many Northeast Johnson County cities participating, and it's just an incredible event. There will be one in twenty twenty fives. Community education efforts. I guess the photo there with Eco Elvis and two of our Sustainability Commission members is from that event last year, as well as the tabling event that you can see there. Community education efforts, the last of the four photos there is from the family picnic event in Mission, and we had a booth there to provide some trivia about sustainability education. And we are the main group in charge of helping maintain the Communities for All Ages designation for the city. And we are maintaining at gold, which is great. And we have a Sustainability Scorecard Subcommittee as part of the Sustainability Commission, and we did complete one scorecard next year, next, please. The self-education and keeping our knowledge as experts is difficult with ebbs and flows in our group and different people entering and exiting. But what we're trying to do is attend as many education events, and we did attend the KC Climate Action Summit, which is that picture shown first. We've also had presentations and invited guest speakers into our Sustainability Commission for the Communities for All Ages from our local Trash and Recycling Hall or GFL, and from a local nonprofit called Reuse Full. Our recycling programs continue to be excellent and bypass everybody's predictions on how many batteries you can collect. I believe we're well over three tons now in batteries. And we also do the holiday light collections at a couple of different places for the city. And that has been a successful event as well. And we did an Earth Day recycling education class to help people in the community learn more. You'll also see us at many different events in the volunteerism showed within this excellent group of citizens, such as Adopt Street at the Mission Market and many more. The picture on the top right there is Martin Luther King Day. Martin Luther King Junior Day, we came in and sorted a whole bunch of batteries to be able to process and recycle them. So what are our plans for twenty twenty five? Going to keep continuing on with our vision and our mission and guiding principles. And that includes Community for All Ages, Recycling Subcommittee's, Scorecards Subcommittee, and Communication Subcommittee. We also plan to be active participants in the Climate Action Task Force updates. And the Environmental Fair will be back. Mark your calendars. It's going to be in October this year. October eighteenth, twenty twenty five will be our big Environmental Fair event. We're also due for our next Sustainability Plan Update, and that will be kind of our biannual retreat process. Will come up later this year or first thing next year, so that we'll set new goals for twenty twenty six, twenty twenty seven. With that, that is a quick update of our plans. And we're excited to partner with you and be the advisors that you want. And we appreciate you listening to our advice. It's truly an honor.
We have any questions for Josh and group? Questions from the council, anybody? No? All right, well, thank you, guys. Our final presentation this evening will be an update from the Parks, Recreation, and Tree Commission with a review of their budget priorities and recommendations that have importance to the commission for the given year. We are joined tonight by the current PRT Commission Chair, Nicole Sullivan, who will share their recommendations with council.
Thank you, mayors. Very happy to be here and honor, it's an honor to be another year of Chair for the PRT Commission. We have a really great group of involved, passionate, and curious community members. So it's been a busy, like, first part of the year, kind of narrowing down our priorities. I figured I would just review the PDF that was included in the agenda. I don't know if we're able to pull that up so everybody else could see. I don't know. Okay, that's perfect. I'll just talk through it. You can see it hopefully in the packet. But our kind of organizing our thoughts is kind of something that we struggle with as a PRT group, whether that's just like what we're passionate about, what we hope the city prioritizes, what we hope Penn and the Parks and Rec Department is able to prioritize too. So we kind of narrowed it down to six different kind of groups. Our top priority for this year is the Broadmoor Park Bridge, and really hoping to advocate for finding a solution to this bridge. The trail around the perimeter of the park obviously has been updated and looks awesome. But we're looking at this as a high priority as it has still not been updated. We would like to consider, you know, alternative solutions for bridge replacement. The original plan was to do like patchwork and replace the bridge itself, something we can speak to more after we go through more details of this quick little summary of everything. But looking at more of a inclusive, like redesign with like stormwater management, landscaping, making that accessible pathway continuous around the whole perimeter of the park with the goal for like long-term maintenance, prevent erosion, and really make a plan for that. The goal will be to reduce annual maintenance costs in addition to beautifying the park, improving the aesthetic, and focusing on just like the whole look of and feel of the park by completing that update. In addition to other things at Broadmoor, it's, we would really like to plan ahead for future funding and grant options for the rest of the park, including like the playground, the dugout and fence, gazebo update, the bathroom and parking lot remodel, which has been discussed in the future. So we just want to make sure that we're kind of getting ahead of that as we look ahead to this year's budget, next year's budget, and down the line. Our next kind of big bullet point is public art installations, something we've been advocating for for several years. Things are, you know, in the, in the works. Murals on current structures would be like our biggest thing that we're excited about. Local structures and, sorry, local sculptures is something we've looked into as well with like a rental shared option with a local company that shares art pieces, so that way we can even have like a rotation of art pieces over the years. It'd be really lovely to engage local art communities, whether that's here in Mission, in the metro in general. So again, this is something we've been wanting for a long time. And now some of our new parks like Waterworks and Mohawk have like the design in mind, like nice little center spaces that has been strategically designed to hopefully house some type of art piece in the future. So something we hope that the city continues to kind of focus on. Another topic that we would like to pursue is partnering with the Kansas Master Gardeners and working to establish a community and/or a demonstration garden of some kind. Last year, our goal was to really investigate what options existed as far as like partnering from a landscaping perspective. And we met with the K-State Extension Office, one of the new director, who helps run the Kansas Master Gardeners and have learned about some options. So our current plan from our perspective is to, we've created a Subcommittee to kind of help get organized essentially and support Penn and you all in the city as we kind of navigate what options we might have. And first, like determining where this might be placed, and then kind of what those steps would be to create a demonstration garden similar to ones that exist elsewhere in the metro. So the next kind of item on my list would be citywide trail connection and accessibility, something that the city has obviously been working on over the last several years as well, but we want to continue to support this. We'd love to see the Rock Creek Corridor Trail resurfacing move forward over the course of the year, prioritizing the, obviously, the sections that need it most from a safety perspective, accessibility perspective. So I believe, again, like supporting what's already in the CIP and really hoping that those projects come to light and kind of keep moving forward. Bench replacements is something that's also in the CIP and another item that we want to make sure that we're supporting. A lot of city benches across the city have served their purpose and would benefit from improving their design or in making it cohesive across the city. So we're excited to see that be completed over the course of the year. And then city engagement and donations as our last, like, major top priority. We're always looking for financial, you know, funding options when it comes to park projects specifically. So we would recommend expanding and advertising opportunities for community members and businesses to financially support parks and recreation projects in addition to even public works, truly, and making this more accessible for folks to donate, whether they're attending an event, whether they're looking online for a way to easily donate and support our city and projects that we have going on or want to have going on. This could also be interesting to look at, like other corporate sponsorships or partners to help expedite improvement projects, whether that's working with a business that's located along the Rock Creek Corridor, something along those lines where we could help, help each other and have, have their corporate sponsor expedite our projects. Other areas of continued support and growth, you know, our kind of mantra that we've said the last several years is every park, every year, as far as like making sure that we're keeping everything well-maintained, safe, inclusive, accessible to all people and abilities, and making sure that we're touching on all the different parks, whether the well-known ones are not or the most used ones are not, making sure that we're keeping everything well-maintained, including like things like our tree canopy and maintaining our Tree USA stance is a big part of what our commission helps support. We would recommend that the Parks, Recreation, like staffing, we would recommend that we maintain what we have worked really hard to build. That's something that has been previously on our recommendations list as a hot top priority of like, we need more, we need more. We hope that we can continue to maintain the full and part-time staffing to support seasonal and routine needs, including obviously maintaining all of the park spaces and community spaces, and then helping with special events that Parks and Rec puts on as well. Last thing kind of on the list is continuing to increase social media posts and education, partnering with the city, with the Parks and Rec social media groups to advertise activities, events, and programs, specifically all of the great like Arbor Day events that we have, the championship, championship tree and the celebration tree options, and then the Johnson County Contain the Rain Sustainable Yard Practices that I just feel like we continue to learn that we, more people need to learn about them. So I think the more that our social media can use those resources and share them more consistently would always be for the better. That's all I got. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Any questions? Questions for Nicole? Yeah, Wanda?
I'm sorry, I just have a question. And the question is that I've been, I, I know that you're talking about a demonstration garden, but do we have any places in Mission where people can actually rent besides, I know Pius has it, but they're full up. Where they can rent a garden where they can actually grow stuff, they can rent property?
Rent property?
Will like pay for a plot?
Community garden kind of thing. I'm not aware of one that we have, no. Brian?
Mr. Scott can answer that question for us.
We used to have a community garden.
Yeah.
And it was located. It was located on the grounds of the sanitary sewer treatment plant, the Nelson Treatment Plant. And when they started doing work up there, we lost our community garden. We've been looking for another location. The challenge is finding a location with water. So there's opportunities for vacant land, but then to find something with water and have access to all that, you know, a hydro, a faucet, that's been a little bit of a challenge with that, but that is kind of our to-do list. It was, yeah, I think we had about five or six families that utilized it. Yeah.
And I think too, is that I know some of like the new apartment complexes, the, the Lanes, I believe, has like some kind of green space that's a shared space. But yeah, I'd be curious if there is a lot of interest in a community garden still. The last, we have heard feedback that we want more landscaping, we want more plant, native plants, a garden of some kind. So I'd be curious if we do have a large amount of people that are wanting to participate in their own garden space or just want to be a part and be able to enjoy it too. So that's kind of why we were going like the demonstration garden kind of route right now.
Any other questions? All right, thank you, Nicole. All right, next we move into notes and bonds. Tonight, we have on our agenda three items related to the issuance of twenty twenty five A general obligation bonds, which were sold via a competitive sale earlier today. We will review the results of the bond sale, and then we all have three separate actions to accept the bid and authorize these bonds. Mr. Bruce Kimmel, the city's municipal advisor with Ellers, is joining us virtually this evening and will provide a report on the results of this morning's bond sale. Bruce, will you please provide your report?
I sure will. Thank you, Mayor and Councilmembers. Bruce Kimmel of Ellers, the city's municipal advisor. I will be hitting a few high points from the sale day report that you all hopefully have access to. You've seen this kind of report before. We don't try to give you all the gory details on the bond issue, but, but let you know what happened with the today's competitive bond sale and the resulting debt service that the city will have for the next ten years. So as you're aware, this bond issue had three purposes. The first two were to fund new street and stormwater infrastructure projects. And the fourth, or third, excuse me, a much smaller portion was to fund the acquisition of some police vehicles and equipment. I'm glad to say that we received eight bids on the city's behalf this morning, and the low bidder was Huntington Securities out of Chicago. And their bid was, their TIC bid, true interest cost, was three point four six percent. As you can see, all of the bidding was actually pretty close, all within about fifteen basis points of each other. So it really shows that the market is pretty dialed in and what, what kind of rates investors are expecting. And there was a lot of great competition to purchase the city's bonds. I will note, and you'll see this in the resolution that you'll have in front of you this evening, we went out to market with a $10 million par amount for the bonds. And because of the significant premium that Huntington included in their winning bid, we were able to reduce the par amount of the bonds by about six hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars. And you can see that in the summary of the sale results, we reduced the par amount by that much, and we have about the same amount of reoffering premium, so. So still about a ten million dollar um, total funding stack. But uh, we were, it was uh, good to be able to re- reduce the par amount and I should note. That the overall TIC was about twenty basis points lower than what we had projected in our pre-sale report. So we had been at about three uh, sixty-five and again you came in around three forty-five. I would, would also note that these bonds will be callable after about the first seven years. Um, on or after October one of twenty thirty-two, you'll be able to prepay or re- refinance any of the remaining maturities. And uh, the closing date for the bonds will be June twelfth, so that will be the day that you will receive the proceeds from this offering. So the next couple pages are just the bid tabulation of, of the eight bids that we did receive on the city's behalf. The first page of that bid tabulation shows Huntington's uh, proposal in some detail. And you might recall from previous bond issues, this dynamic with premium bidding before. Um, you can see that uh, the coupon rates, i.e. the, the face interest rates on these bonds will start out at five percent. And then drop down to four percent for the last couple of years. But that's not really the city's true borrowing cost, for that we have to look at the yields. And you can see that the yields range from about three percent up to three point seven percent. That difference between the coupons and the yields is what's generating that premium, in other words. I- in exchange for the benefit of having those higher interest rates on the bonds. Even though the market would say that the rates should be less, um, Huntington offered you basically six hundred and thirty thousand dollars extra. And we use that to reduce the bond sizing accordingly. I won't go through all the bids, but again, you can see how competitive and how tight the bidding was all the way from one through eight. And then the next several pages, I think five pages or six actually, are the final debt service schedules. For the bond issue, uh, you can see that again, we have the police vehicles at about four hundred thousand dollars of funding. Stormwater at just under four point four million dollars of funding. The streets at a little over five million dollars of funding and so a total of about nine point eight million of project funding. I should note that with the advantageous bid that we received from Huntington, we were able to increase the streets funding amount. By about sixty-two thousand dollars, I guess sixty-three thousand dollars. And also the overall debt service on the bonds will also be lower by about the same amount as, as coincidence would have it. So altogether, you're saving and, and benefiting um, by a total of about a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. Due to this better than expected um, bid from Huntington. Uh, uh, I won't go through all of these uh, details unless you have questions, but I just would note again that we do have the. Overall bond payments for the next ten years and then them broken out um, for each of the three purposes as well. And then finally, mayor and council, I'd like to point out that as part of this bond issuance process, the city did have. A robust discussion with S and P Global Markets who have uh, rated the city's bond offerings for some time now. And the city's double A plus rating was affirmed with flying colors, um, there was really no. Downward pressure whatsoever on the city's rating. Uh, your team did a great job of preparing for the call and, and explaining e- exactly where the city is at with its financial planning. Its management practices and all sorts of other important details. And uh, basically the, the feedback we got is that the city is essentially doing as well as it, it can. And that, you know, there's really not a whole lot more you could be doing differently. Um, to further strengthen your credit rating, so that was great affirmation for all of the work you do. On the, at the governing body level as well as for your staff. Why don't I stop there and see if you have any questions about the bond sale results or the resulting debt service or the credit rating?
Any questions for Bruce? Yeah, Debbie? Oh, can you turn the mic on?
Just want to thank you Bruce for your, your ability to maintain continuity with the city. I think that makes a big difference in how we proceed on projects because we trust you and you've been so um, obliging. Always here on the phone or in person and we just want to tell you how much we appreciate your hard work.
Thank you, it's a, it's, I, I can't believe it, it's been over twenty years that I've been working with the city of Mission and. I, I hope to do so for, for longer still and I really appreciate your comments Debbie.
Yes, thank you Bruce, any questions? Seeing none, um, I would now entertain a motion to accept the sale of the bonds and award them to Huntington Securities.
Mayor, I move the city council approve the winning bid from Huntington Securities Incorporated with a true interest cost of three point four six six two percent. As presented by the city's municipal advisor, Ellers Inc.
Motion and second, any further discussion? Seeing none, Robin, please call the roll.
Hayden Chumposi?
Hi.
Ryer?
Hi.
Loudon?
Hi.
Chosey?
Hi.
Vaughn?
Hi.
Carpenter Davis?
Hi.
Krieger?
Hi.
Schmidt?
Hi.
Motion carries.
Alright, next we have an ordinance authorizing the sale of the general obligation bonds, series twenty twenty-five A, I would entertain a motion.
Mayor, I move the city council approve an ordinance authorizing and providing for issue, for the issuance of the general obligation bond, series twenty twenty-five A.
Motion and second, any further discussion? Seeing none, Robin, please call the roll.
Ryer?
Hi.
Hayden Chumposi?
Hi.
Schmidt?
Hi.
Vaughn?
Yeah, hi.
Chosey?
Hi.
Loudon?
Hi.
Carpenter Davis?
Hi.
Krieger?
Hi.
Motion carries.
And our last related action item this evening is consideration of a resolution prescribing the form and details of the general obligation. Bond issue, series twenty twenty-five A, I would entertain a motion.
Mayor, I move the city council approve a resolution prescribing the form and details of an authori- of an authorizing and directing the sale and delivery of the series. Twenty twenty-five A bonds.
Motion and second, any further discussion? Seeing none, Robin, please call the roll.
Loudon?
Hi.
Chosey?
Hi.
Krieger?
Hi.
Ryer?
Hi.
Vaughn?
Hi.
Hayden Chumposi?
Hi.
Carpenter Davis?
Hi.
Schmidt?
Hi.
Motion carries.
Alright, I would like to thank city staff, Bruce and his team at Ellers and Gilmore and Bell for working to close this issue. And look forward to the important street improvements, stormwater improvements and necessary police vehicles these debt proceeds will fund, so thank you team. Uh, we will now move into our consent agenda. Our consent agenda consists of four items tonight, our council committees met on May seventh, twenty twenty-five and fully discussed each of these items. The committees agreed that the items listed on our consent agenda are routine enough to be considered under a single motion. If a council member or member of the public would like an item removed from the consent agenda, they may request that at this time. Otherwise, I would entertain, attain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Mayor, I move the city council adopt the consent agenda as printed items four A through four D. Second.
Motion and second, any discussion? Seeing none, Robin, please call the roll.
Hayden Chumposi?
Hi.
Chosey?
Hi.
Loudon?
Hi.
Vaughn?
Hi.
Ryer?
Hi.
Carpenter Davis?
Hi.
Krieger?
Hi.
Schmidt?
Hi.
Motion carries.
Alright, we will now move into public comments, if any members of the public would like to make a comment on an item that is not included on our agenda tonight, now would be the time. Again, if you are participating through Zoom, please either add your comment in the chat feature and it will be read out loud or note that you would like to be called upon. And we will call on you shortly to make your comment verbally. Please remember your comments or questions are visible to everyone in the meeting. If you're a part of our in-person group tonight, please raise your hand but stay seated and we will call on you to come to the lectern to make your comments. When you make your comment, please state your name and city of residence for the record. Also be conscientious of others trying to speak and speak slowly and clearly. If I need to confirm something that may have been difficult to hear, I will ask for clarification. Public comments are limited to three minutes per person. Justin, do we have any comments online? Alright, seeing no hands in the audience, we will move into action items. We do have one item coming forward from our planning commission tonight for consideration of a special use permit to operate a dog daycare overnight boarding facility. At fifty-nine eighteen Broadmoor Street, Brian, will you please provide your report?
Okay, mayor? This item is a special use permit for a dog daycare and overnight boarding operation. At fifty-nine eighteen Broadmoor Street, this was case number twenty-five zero three. That was heard by the planning commission at their um, April twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-five meeting. At that time, there was a public hearing held to take public testimony. Uh, the applicant is Mr. Damian Hicks, who's here with us this evening. He is the owner of KC K-Nines Incorporated, doing business as playful pack. And he is interested in purchasing this property, the property is currently owned by Unleashed Pet Rescue Adoption. And has been utilized as an animal shelter for the past decade or more. Um, as stated, Mr. Hicks, we'd like to operate a dog daycare and overnight boarding operation at this facility. Um, proposes to have the operation open seven days a week from approximately six-thirty in the morning to seven-thirty PM. They expect there to be about four employees at any given time. Uh, he's intending to have two indoor activity rooms, one for kind of large dogs, one for small dogs. Now, there'd also be an outdoor activity area on the north side of the building. And we do have the presentation up. So that is an aerial view of the building at fifty-nine eighteen Broadmoor. On the north side of the building, there's currently an asphalt pad. That um, unleashed has been kind of using a sort of an activity area or outdoor area for their. Dogs to be able to get out and exercise a little bit. We have had issues in the past with um. Animal feces being washed off that area and out into the street and into the, on the sidewalk. And eventually winding up in our stormwater sewer system, that is a violation of our MS four permit that we have with the state of Kansas to operate that system. So to kind of address that issue, make sure that doesn't happen again. We've asked Mr. Hicks to tear out the asphalt and replace that with kind of what's called. Canine grass, which, can show the next slide please. That gives an aerial photograph and the asphalt pad on the north side of the building, the next slide please. So the S, uh, the canine grass is kind of an asphalt type surface, it's much safer for the dogs. It also has kind of a mesh and then it's overlaid on top of a gravel, sub base. Um, there are variations of the system that allow to kind of drain down to a drain. We are asking in this case that there be no drain, that it just be allowed to naturally percolate into the ground. Um, we're also asking that he provide uh, instructions on the maintenance of that when he applies for permit for installation. Um, the, the employees are kind of monitoring that area, are supposed to clean up any feces as soon as that occurs. And then sanitize the area and then there's occasional vacuuming just to pick up debris and leaves and whatnot. And then there could be occasional kind of hosing down of the areas to keep it clean. Of course, it'd be outdoors to be exposed to rainwater, so again, all of that would just kind of percolate through that system and naturally into the ground. Um, there are some other conditions as part of this conditional use permit, uh, that being the primary one. The other one is that the special use permit is contingent upon the property being used by KC K-Nines, doing business as playful pack. And to operate the kennel and board, overnight boarding services. And should the property use and or ownership change in the future, the special use permit shall be reevaluated. Um, KC K-Nines will obtain and maintain a boarding kennel operator license issued by the Kansas Department of Agriculture, Division of Animal Health. And will follow all pertinent rules and regulations that outline the Kansas Pet Animal Act. Um, the owner operator will ensure that procedures and, and practices are in place for the emergency evacuation of animals from the shelter and after hour. We talked about the. Grass. And then the applicant will be ma- uh, be made to, will be required to the city, all necessary permits for any work done. This shall require um, ins- inspection of the installation. And then um, routine inspection afterwards, once it's installed. And then, um, there was some testimony taken at the planning commission meeting. Um, the gentleman who's the operator of Mission Pet Mart, which is around the corner, kind of spoke to um, the current user. And was just kind of wanting some assurances that, um, some of the issues that are current would be addressed in terms of cleaning up as the animals and. Uh, we do have a. A provision in here that they are required to, even if they do walk the dog down the street, they're required to clean up after the dog and properly dispose of that. And then the um, planning commission asked for an additional condition related to the trash bin. So Mr. Hicks is intending to use or share a trash bin with the owners of Planet Sub, which is on the north side of the property. And the planning commission requested that. That that arrangement be worked out and that there be an enclosure placed around that trash bin according to code, so we'll be working on that as well. Um, I think that concludes my report, open for any questions, and like I said, Mr. Hicks is here too for any questions.
Great, uh, first, is there any member of the public who would like to comment on this issue, anyone online, Justin? Seeing no hands in our audience, uh, we'll move open the, move to open it for council discussion, any council comments or questions? Yeah, Ben?
Yeah, I, I just find myself wholly in agreement with the staff and the planning commission recommendation. This doesn't seem like much of a stretch in terms of a special use and it seems like it's been pretty carefully contemplated with reasonable requirements, so. Seems like in a, a, an easy win for me.
Debbie?
I just want to welcome you and we look forward to having a great relationship because that has such potential. So many people around here with pets need somewhere to leave their pets overnight and it's, it's a great opportunity for the community to, to have. Somebody that's credible in there, thank you.
I don't know, uh, if the applicant, have you had anything you wanted, wanted to add, feel free to come up if you had any.
I just also address the trash comment because that did come up in planning commission, I've actually spoken with the Planet Sub owner. He's agreeable, he's like, look, you just, just show me what you would like in a rendering, we're going to release, if, if approved, obviously we're going to release our design team. To put together something to run it by, you know, the planning board as well as the guy at Planet Subs, his name's Jeff, um, I actually spoke with him yesterday. Um, talking about, he said you can have one of the parking spots if you need it, if we need to put an enclosure, so he's. I think he's agreeable to pretty much anything, I just told him I'd run anything by him, we'd get something in writing from him, um. You know, to be able to access that trash bin on his property, so we've already, we're working on that, but it'll be worked out prior to, obviously.
Great.
Occupying the place.
Yeah, what, Leah then Wanda?
I'm really glad that you're um, putting in the, the, the AstroTurf with the drainage system for. Uh, you know, the play area for the dogs that will, will really help.
We're looking into, I mean, what they've shown, we're looking into also, there's another layer that'll help it drain more, it'll give air ventilation, which will help reduce odor. Bacteria, stuff like that as well, um, so there's just so much new technology out there for this kind of stuff that's. That hasn't even been used in the past like two years that I've been working through this, so always finding new technology to implement.
Absolutely, thank you.
And Wanda?
Thank you, I just, I just missed, when, when is this going to be opened?
All goes well, my goal would be sometime late fall.
Late fall?
So, but yeah, we haven't done too much on releasing because it's, obviously, we have to get the SUP first, so. I'll have more information on that within the, in the coming weeks.
But it's already, you've already purchased the building.
Yes, that's already underway, all of it, but sign the paperwork, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Alright. Thanks, thank you for coming, um, I would now entertain a motion on the special use permit to operate a dog daycare overnight boarding facility at fifty-nine eighteen Broadmoor Street.
Mayor, I move that per section four forty-five point two twenty of the mission code. City council grant a special use permit to KC K-Nines LLC, doing business as playful pack. To operate a kennel and overnight boarding operation for dogs at fifty-nine eighteen Broadmoor for a period of five years.
Motion and second, any further discussion? Seeing none, Robin, please call the roll.
Schmidt?
Hi.
Krieger?
Hi.
Loudon?
Hi.
Chosey?
Hi.
Carpenter Davis?
Hi.
Vaughn?
Hi.
Hayden Chumposi?
Hi.
Ryer?
Hi.
Motion carries.
And welcome to Mission.
Thank you for your time, everyone.
Alright, we will now move into our committee reports, first we have council member Schmidt, will you please provide a report from the Finance Administration Committee?
I will, thank you mayor. Uh, the Finance and Administration Committee met on May seventh and considered seven items. The ordinance and resolution authorizing the issuance of general obligation bonds, series twenty twenty-five A for Johnson Drive. The Rock Creek Channel and Police Department vehicle and equipment purchases were considered at the outset of the meeting. And the May seventh committee meeting minutes were approved on the consent agenda. The tax increment financing ordinance for fifty-one oh one Johnson Drive, ordinance establishing the fifty-one oh one Johnson Drive Community Improvement District. Resolution of intent to issue IRBs for fifty-one oh one Johnson Drive. Ordinance terminating the mission crossing redevelopment district and phase one of police compensation adjustments will be considered under the regular agenda this evening. Item 7A, tax increment financing ordinance 5101 Johnson Drive. The former Wild Oats property located at 5101 Johnson Drive was recently acquired by local development Dan Carr of US Federal Properties Co. Who is planning to reuse the existing building, refurbishing both it and the surrounding site to accommodate one or more retail tenants. The property is currently in an established tax increment financing district. In preliminary conversations with the developer, they are interested in pursuing TIF as well as a community improvement district and IRBs for the sale tax exemption in order to fund a portion of the upgrades and improvements to the property. The developer submitted a TIF redevelopment project plan in February 2025. A public hearing on TIF finance, uh, well, just TIF, uh, redevelopment project plan was held earlier tonight. The action item before the council is now an ordinance, which would divide the Rock Creek Redevelopment District number 3B into two. Adopt a TIF redevelopment project plan and approve execution of a development agreement between the city and Mission 101 LLC. Mayor, I move the city council approve the ordinance marking, making findings and one dividing Rock Creek Development District number 3B into two districts. Two, adopting a TIF redevelopment project plan for redevelopment district number 3D. And three, approving the execution of a development agreement between the city and Mission 101 LLC.
Second. We have a motion in a second. Do we have any public comment on this item? Seeing none, any council comments or questions? Yeah, Ben?
Yeah, again, this is another one that I find to be, um, after we've considered everything over the course of a few months here, pretty reasonable. As was mentioned in, in the presentations and the pub, in the public hearing, you know, there's not a large increment expected to be generated here on the property taxes. So I don't think there's anything unreasonable about asking for all of that to go towards a long vacant property. And again, I, I view CID as sort of a self-imposed tax to improve the property. So seems like a good use of, of incentives and a, and a reasonable amount for a project that I think has a pretty broad appeal for the city and, and especially for that location.
Great. Any other comments or questions? Seeing none, Robin, please call the roll.
Crane?
Aye.
Chosie?
Aye.
Carpenter Davis?
Aye.
Schmidt?
Aye.
Ryer?
Aye.
Loudon?
Aye.
Hayden Chumposi?
Aye.
Von?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Item 7B, ordinance establishing 5101 Johnson Drive Community Improvement District. A public hearing on the creation of a community improvement district was held earlier tonight in relation to the 5101 Johnson Drive project at the site of the former Wild Oats building. Community Improvement District and the CID sales tax to be levied must be approved by the council, but does not take away existing sales or property tax revenues generated by any businesses located without, within the CID. Following the public hearing, the council now considers an ordinance to formally establish the community improvement district. The state requires notice of any change to sales tax rates prior to the first quarter, the prior to the first of the quarter, immediately preceding the quarter of the sales taxes to take effect. Originally, the developer had requested the CID sales tax take effect October 1st, 2025, but has since revised the request to have the additional CID sales tax become effective January 1st, 2026. If approved, the city would need to advise the state by September 30th, 2025, in order to have the CID sales tax take effect January 1st, 2026. Mayor, I move the city council approve an ordinance authorizing the creation of the 5101 Johnson Drive Community Improvement District, authorizing certain project improvements related thereto, approving the estimated costs of said improvements, levying of community improvement district sales tax and providing for the method of financing the same.
Second. Right, we have a motion in a second. Any public comment on this item? Seeing none, any further council comments or discussion? Seeing none, Robin, please call the roll.
Ryer?
Aye.
Loudon?
Aye.
Von?
Aye.
Hayden Chumposi?
Aye.
Crane?
Aye.
Chosie?
Aye.
Schmidt?
Aye.
Carpenter Davis?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Item 7C, resolution of intent IRBs 5101 Johnson Drive. In addition to the request for tax increment financing and a community improvement district petition, Mission 101 LLC has also submitted an application requesting the issuance of IRBs for the sole purpose of a sales tax exemption on construction materials. The city's bond council, Gilmore and Bell, has prepared a resolution which establishes the intent and authority of the city to proceed with the transaction. The IRBs and the associated interests shall be special, limited obligations of the payable, city payable solely out of the amounts derived by the city under a lease agreement. The bonds are a, are not a general obligation of the city and are not backed by the full faith and credit of the city. The bonds are not payable in any manner by taxation, but shall be payable solely from the funds provided, uh, for in the indenture. The resolution anticipates the issuance of bonds in an amount not to exceed $9 million. The issuance of the bond shall not directly, indirectly, or congenitally con, con, I don't know this word. Contingently, thank you, obligate the city, the state, or any other political subdivision, subdivision thereof to levy any form of taxation or to make any appropriation for their payment. The city is in no way responsible for the repayment of these bonds. The intent to issue the IRBs is reflected in the redevelopment agreement that has been presented for council consideration. Mayor, I move the city council approve the resolution establishing the intent and authority of the city to issue industrial, industrial revenue bonds IRBs in one or more series in an aggregate principal amount not to exceed $9 million to finance the cost of acquiring, constructing, and equipping a commercial facility for the 5101 Johnson Drive project for the benefit of Mission 101 LLC.
Second. Motion in a second. Any public comment on this item? Seeing none, we'll turn to council comments or questions. Yeah, Debbie?
Okay, on the IRB level, and since it's construction, so we're thinking at the beginning, is there a timeframe when that exemption ceases?
I would ask our, someone from our bond council to answer that question.
Come on up, Kevin.
Turned into a long walk after the clip. Good, good evening, everyone. Hi, Kevin Wimpy with Gilmore and Bell, the city's bond council. Um, so council member, when the, the, the state Department of Revenues is the entity that renders the sales tax exemption certificate. And as part of that, there's a submission that's signed by the city and the developer entity. And they stipulate their construction timeline. And so as that's requested, there will be an end date or an expiration date on that certificate tied to that agreement with the state form agreement. Um, extending that is pretty administrative through the city, but as part of the development agreement, we have the schedule and so forth that they would have to hit under our, um, separate private development. Sure thing.
Any other comments or questions? All right, I would just, uh, yeah, thank Mr. Carr for his willingness to invest in Mission and looking forward to a successful project here, which I think everyone on, on council would echo, but uh, no further council questions. Robin, please call the roll.
Loudon?
Aye.
Chosie?
Aye.
Crane?
Aye.
Ryer?
Aye.
Von?
Aye.
Hayden Chumposi?
Aye.
Carpenter Davis?
Aye.
Schmidt?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Item 7D, ordinance terminating Mission Crossing Redevelopment District. In January 2010, the city council approved ordinance number 1316, establishing the Mission Crossing TIF Redevelopment District. The redevelopment agreement committed 100% of the TIF property tax increment and 100% of the city's 1% TIF sales tax to reimburse the developer, the developer for TIF eligible expenses. In addition to the TIF, the city council also approved a community improvement district for the project, which levied an additional 1% retail sales tax for sales generated within the district. Once the project was complete, the developer submitted expenses totaling $6 million to be certified as eligible for reimbursement. That total included both TIF and CID eligible expenses. Of the 6 million total, 3.3 million was determined to be eligible TIF expenses, which were certified accordingly for reimbursement. The city issued its first TIF reimbursement in March 2013. The redevelopment agreement allowed for expenses to be recovered over the full 20 years of the TIF. Due in part to the combination of TIF property and TIF sales tax revenues, the payback for the TIF eligible expenses was accomplished in 12 years and the final TIF reimbursement was issued in February 2025. The city sent a certified letter to the developer informing them reimbursement of all eligible TIF expenses has been completed and advising of the city's intent to dissolve the TIF district. When the TIF district was first established, the base value of the parcels equaled $434,750,000. The 2024 valuation for all parcels in this TIF district now totaled just over $4 million. The city estimates an average of $70,000 per year in additional property tax revenues will now be collected due to the TIF district being abolished. Additionally, this action will also provide an estimated $140,000 per year in additional sales tax revenues as the city's 1% general sales tax commitment has also been fulfilled. Other taxing entities benefiting from this action include Johnson County Government, including the library system and Parks and Recreation, Johnson County Community College, Shawnee Mission District, School District, and Consolidated Fire District number two. The developer has not yet been reimbursed for all certified CID eligible expenses. So CID collections and distributions will continue until the sooner the total has been paid for the 22, 22-year expiration of the Community Improvement District. Mayor, I move the city council approve the ordinance terminating the Mission Crossing Redevelopment District and the redevelopment project plan created pursuant to ordinance number 1316 and terminating tax increment financing with respect to such district.
Second. All right, we have a motion in a second. Do we have any public comment on this item? Seeing none, any council comment or questions? Yeah, Ben?
Yeah, I have clear that the CID would expire then in about seven years. Right, okay.
Okay. Any other comments or question?
I, I just have a question. My question is, is, um, what do you, how long do they get to claim certified eligible expenses? I'm just unclear as to what that means.
So typically what will happen is that at the time the project is completed, the developer will submit all of their eligible expenses and those are reviewed and some of those are rejected. And then we assign those, uh, as either TIF eligible expenses or, uh, CID eligible expenses depending on, um, the statutory criteria. And then we just sort of work our way through that occasionally. And I don't think this has occurred. I don't believe it occurred on this project. They may incur some other eligible expense after that kind of initial certification. But most frequently, we get all of those expenses on the front end and then it's just a matter of reimbursing that over either the 20 or 22-year period.
So we still have to reimburse some stuff or no? That's all I just kind of.
Under, so we do, anything that was TIF eligible, which tends to be your site work, there's no vertical construction that is TIF eligible. Um, so the TIF eligible expenses have all been, they've hit the cap. So that's why we're terminating this TIF district. And so all of the taxing jurisdictions start recovering, um, their regular property tax revenues and we get back our 1% uh, sales tax that had been dedicated. CID, uh, eligible expenses are broader in scope. Uh, and so they still have several expenses which have not yet um, been reimbursed through the CID sales tax. And so, and until, as this, uh, was mentioned, until they, we either reimburse 100% of those remaining eligible expenses or we hit the 22-year expiration of the Community Improvement District. And they're still eligible to be reimbursed for that.
So we know what we owe them?
Correct.
Oh, okay.
Yes.
Yeah, I, I thought these kind of just came up. Okay.
Thank you.
But our owing them is only contingent on the revenues coming in right on the project.
Correct.
Any other questions? Seeing none, Robin, please call the roll.
Von?
Uh, aye. Sorry.
Hayden Chumposi?
Aye.
Carpenter Davis?
Aye.
Crane?
Aye.
Ryer?
Aye.
Loudon?
Aye.
Schmidt?
Aye.
Chosie?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Item 7E, police compensation adjustments phase one. In a February 2025 city council work session, staff presented information on current challenges and concerns surrounding compensation for the city's sworn law enforcement personnel. Challenges in hiring and retaining employees and having positions vacant for long periods of time can create stresses for current officers. Officers are committed to the department and the community, but frequently underscore and articulate that the factors that work against our department when it comes to recruitment and retention are competitive pay and the facility. It is important to find sustainable, practical solutions that allow the department to maintain its high standards and level of service. Being able to recruit in a highly competitive environment is important, but retaining our current staff is also vital for several reasons. The most important is that their expertise and knowledge makes the community safer in a more holistic way, since experienced officers have proven that they have the skills and demeanor to serve the community effectively and fairly, oftentimes in high-stress situations. Additionally, the costs associated with having to hire, train, and outfit new officers can be significantly more than pay increases over time. The financial implications for phase one are significant, but meaningful progress needs to be made now while also continuing, continuing to develop and refine a plan for long-term sustainability and viability. The market surrounding law enforcement pays seems to be stabilizing somewhat, but Mission has fallen behind in recent years. Staff's objective in making the phase one recommendation is to provide a meaningful increase to all sworn personnel in the positions of police officer to lieutenant effective June 1st, 2025, in an effort to retain quality staff while we gather additional information. Estimated increase in phase one ranged from 2 to 20% per official, officer, total of 26 sworn personnel impacted, depending on officer's current salaries and time in the position. The staff recommendation for council consideration at this time includes approval for expenditure authority up to $250,000 to realign salaries effective June 1st, 2025 for Mission Police Department personnel for the positions of police officer to lieutenant. Increase the starting pay for a police officer from $54,924 to $63,000 effective June 1st, 2025. There are three exempt positions, chief, deputy chief, and captain, which will not be impacted by the initial implementation strategy, but which will be included in the development of the longer-term plan. Mayor, I move the city council authorize the city manager to expend up to $250,000 to realign salaries for Mission Police Department personnel for the positions of police officer through lieutenant and increase the starting salary for a police officer from $54,924,000 to $63,000, all effective June 1st, 2025.
Second. Motion in a second. Any public comment on this item? Seeing none, I'll turn to council comments or questions. Yeah, Leah?
You know, Mission is a wonderful place to live and partly because it is safe and our police do a great job and we want to make sure that we keep you well-staffed.
Mm-hmm. Yes, hopefully this will help with recruiting. Cheryl?
One of the things I want to say is the community presence and it's the helping because I heard that from a vendor that somebody fell, you know, in a wheelchair and a police officer came and helped them. You know, that speaks so much of public service and it warmed my heart. Thank you.
I might just give a quick update. We, that we are still down one sworn position. We still have people that need to get through the academy and are not through all of their field training. So we don't have everybody out on the street on their own. But I think, uh, and I know the chief, uh, and I both appreciate the support that the council has given. We've been working since the committee meeting on the implementation strategy for this phase one. Um, and so hopefully this will allow us to fill that last remaining position and stabilize for a little, for the foreseeable future.
Yeah. Great. Robin, please call the roll.
Carpenter Davis?
Aye.
Schmidt?
Aye.
Loudon?
Aye.
Chosie?
Aye.
Crane?
Aye.
Ryer?
Aye.
Von?
Aye.
Hayden Chumposi?
Aye.
Motion carries.
That concludes my report.
All right, thank you. Council member Ryer, will you please provide a report from the Community Development Committee?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. The Community Development Committee also met on May 7th and considered four items. The meeting minutes and the pool liner restoration, Rock Creek Trail repairs, and purchase of an industrial-sized van for Pellic Works facility were approved under the consent agenda earlier tonight. No items will be considered under the regular agenda this evening. That concludes my report.
All right, thank you. Uh, we do not have any unfinished business tonight. There were, therefore, we will move on to our new business. We do have two items of new business tonight. The first is approval of a landscaping contract with Embassy Landscape Group. Uh, Stephanie, can you please provide a report on this item? Or Brent?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Um, yes, this is for a citywide landscape contract. You know, for the past few years, even going farther back than that, everything was kind of a one-off scenario when something needed to be done. And sometimes we were kind of late to the game to get something cleaned up. So this is getting consistent, taking care of everything, making everything look nice. Um, as we've moved into the native landscape and moving forward with that, uh, the new phase of Johnson Drive will have natives, the phase we just redid last year natives, um, it really takes a specific contractor that knows those plants that you're not. Some of them can look at like weeds at some points. So it's nice to have somebody that is dialed in and taking care of that weekly through the growing season and cutting them back and then you'd be cut back. And making sure our investment lasts a long time. So it's consolidating all the facility work. It would be City Hall, Police Department, Aquatic Center, Johnson Drive from Lamarnton all, from Lamarnton all now. And then we would wrap up the new phase of Johnson Drive probably in 27 after that. And then we would wrap up the new phase of Johnson Drive probably in twenty-seven after that construction is completed. The parking lot and the transit center and the community center as well. The contract is in one-year increments. I mean, if they're not doing a good job, we can get out of it every year within a, I think it's fifteen or twenty-day written notice. So if we're not having good luck or we're losing plants, we can go down a different route. But it is renewable for five years, which I believe is a good thing because you can keep a contractor on board that knows the area and it probably gets more familiar with it and just gets looking better every year. So we requested bids on May second. Bids were open on May sixteenth. We only had one bidder, Embassy Landscape Group. They have done work for the city in the past. They did the tree trimming along Johnson Drive. They've cleaned up the transit center, transit center a couple of times. And they've done, I think, City Hall maintenance once. And they have a, two or three people on their staff that are natives, like that's their job. So we've got that behind us with the natives at City Hall as well and just keeping all that stuff maintained. So staff is recommending a contract with Embassy Landscaping for forty-three thousand four-hundred-and-fifty-four dollars annually with the option to renew for four years based on their performance and availability. Be happy to answer any questions.
Great. Any questions for Brent? Yeah, Leah, then Wanda?
Did their bid come in about where you expected?
Yeah, sorry I didn't mention that. We had fifty grand budgeted, so it's a little under what we expected. We've kind of been chasing this program down for about three years and gone through some iterations and got some bids. And that's kind of how we came up with that fifty-thousand dollar number. So everybody feels good that, you know, we got a good number for the type of service we ask for. I mean, they'll be on-site weekly during the growth season for City Hall, pulling weeds, Johnson Drive, and all that stuff. So I think we'll get a longer-lasting, good product with this kind of service.
It was fun to see the native plants coming this spring because they were done so late in the year. It was hard to see last year what they were going to be like, but it looks really good and it just makes our city look amazing. So I'm, I'm glad that you have made this decision and that frees you all up to do other things like unexpected storms.
And I think it'll look better next year. We had a lot of loss with the harsh winter and where we piled snow and stuff, so we're kind of working through that. But a lot of that's warranty work. And then AT&T is picking up the stuff that they destroyed when they put in their new fiber. So in the next thirty days, you'll see a couple more thousand plants going out there as well. So we'll beef them up a little more.
Yeah, Wanda?
My question just is, I'm, I just want to be clear as do they, are they putting in plants? Because I noticed that the dog hospital or the animal hospital, they, they had plants and now they don't.
So I'm working through that one. They kind of assumed that landscaping was theirs and wouldn't mulch it on their own. So I'm trying to set up a meeting with them and I think they might have sprayed the plants along their corridors. So kind of working through that and trying to figure it out. So, but that's the only area we really had that problem with. So until I can get a written agreement with them that they're not going to touch it, I really don't want to put anything back at this point.
So they will replace plants yearly if there's something lost?
So that would be an additional cost. If we need that, the plan is for them to just maintain them and keep them growing the first, I mean, the first three years of the big years on natives. And we had a six-months agreement with Johnson Drive, so that's why they're replanting everything. And then we'll help out with some of the water and stuff, but.
But all of that stuff are, all of those are perennials. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay.
And that's one of them that's, you can get it the other way. It's perennial and it's.
Can you?
So there was a hundred percent loss. I forget which plant it was on the Johnson, so the the growers sent the wrong plant and that's why we had a big die-off. So that's on the contractors, not costing us anything. But that's why some of that stuff's missing in some of those beds and we're just worked through it today. So I'd say the next thirty days, you'll see that stuff getting planted out there.
Yeah, Cheryl?
Just a question. Now, this is just covering the plants and things like that. This isn't like lawns or?
So we have a separate mowing contract. So this covers mulching, regular mulch plus the mulch that's required and the specs for the natives. Tree trimming along Johnson Drive every other year and the transit center. Mulching at Anderson Park, the pool here and the transit center. But it's just bed maintenance, tree trimming, just basic plant maintenance and bush trimming and stuff like that.
Great, thanks. Any other questions? Yeah, Ben?
Yes, I haven't seen this company in particular, but this is the time of year for my favorite gripe of all, which is landscape trucks obstructing trails and sidewalks. So could we please remind them not to do that?
Yes.
No, it's probably not them particularly, but in general, that's always hard on a bike or with a stroller.
And streets too, double parking across from each other and residential streets, I would say is also fun.
Yeah, we did the walkthrough today, just kind of getting this contract going, kind of late in the year, so we could start getting everything looking good. And, you know, I was like, all the areas, areas you're working in, there's high visibility and they're aware of it. And I'm not saying the first month or two might not be a little bumpy, but we'll work through that and I think we'll get a good finished product at the end.
Great. Do we have any public comment on this item? Seeing none, I would entertain a motion.
Mayor, I move the City Council approve the landscape maintenance contract with Embassy Landscape Group in an amount not to exceed forty-three thousand four-hundred-and-fifty-four dollars annually. The option to renew for four additional years based on performance and subject availability.
Second.
Thank you.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, Robin, please call the roll. Loudon?
Aye.
Chelsea?
Aye.
Kring?
Aye.
Ryer?
Aye.
Bonn?
Aye.
Hayden Chompousi?
Aye.
Carpenter Davis?
Aye.
Schmidt?
Aye.
Motion carries. All right, our second item of new business tonight is for approval of a resolution updating bank signatories. Justin, can you please provide a report about this item?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. This is a housekeeping item, housekeeping item related to who is authorized to sign checks on behalf of the city. Anytime we wish to update that list, our bank, which is our main bank, which is Security Bank, requires approved resolution for us to do that. So the reason we're bringing this before you tonight is because we have a new special projects coordinator, which will be, that's who will be running the Mission Market. So updating who is in charge of our Mission Market account. So that is what the, so that person will go on there along with myself, actually. So we'll have two new staff members who are authorized to write checks for that account. So that is happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for Justin? Seeing none, any public comments on this issue? Seeing none, I would entertain a motion.
Mayor, I move the City Council approve the resolution authorizing certain signatories for various city of missions checking accounts.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, Robin, please call the roll. Schmidt?
Aye.
Carpenter Davis?
Aye.
Hayden Chompousi?
Aye.
Bonn?
Aye.
Ryer?
Aye.
Kring?
Aye.
Chelsea?
Aye.
Loudon?
Aye.
Motion carries. All right, all, our final item of new business tonight is for the selection of chairs and vice-chairs for our council committees. We'll start with our Community Development Committee and first vote on the chairperson followed by the vice-chairperson. We will then do the same for Finance and Administration Committee. I would now open the floor for nominations for Community Development Committee Chair.
I would, Mayor, I nominate Cheryl Carpenter Davis for the position of Community Development Committee Chairperson with the term expiring May twentieth, twenty twenty-six.
Second.
All right, do we have any other nominations for Chair? Seeing none, I would entertain a motion for election, or sorry. We are hearing no further nominations. We will go to our vote. So Robin, please call the roll. Chelsea?
Aye.
Loudon?
Aye.
Kring?
Aye.
Ryer?
Aye.
Bonn?
Aye.
Hayden Chompousi?
Aye.
Carpenter Davis?
Aye.
Schmidt?
Aye.
Motion carries. All right, congratulations. We will now take nominations for Community Development Committee Vice Chair.
I nominate.
Not everyone all at once. Just have a sorry.
I second, I second, Mary.
Motion and a second for Councilmember Ryer for Vice Chair. Any other nominations? Do you accept the nomination?
Yes.
Okay. Robin, please call the roll. Loudon?
Aye.
Schmidt?
Aye.
Chelsea?
Aye.
Carpenter Davis?
Aye.
Kring?
Aye.
Hayden Chompousi?
Aye.
Ryer?
Aye.
Bonn?
Aye.
Motion carries. All right, congratulations to our Chair and Vice Chair. We will now move on to Finance Administration. Are there any nominations for Finance Administration Committee Chair?
I would like to, Mayor, nominate Brian Schmidt again for the position of Finance Administration Committee Chairperson with a term expiring May twentieth, twenty twenty-six. He did a great job. Second.
Motion and a second. Do we have any further nominations for F and A Chair?
I would accept this contingently based on removing words that I am not familiar with. From, from the, the minutes.
Well, we'll have to work on that. All right, Robin, please call the roll. Hayden Chompousi?
Aye.
Chelsea?
Aye.
Loudon?
Aye.
Kring?
Aye.
Ryer?
Aye.
Bonn?
Aye.
Carpenter Davis?
Aye.
Schmidt?
Aye.
Motion carries. All right, congratulations to our Chair. We will now take nominations for Finance Administration Committee Vice Chair.
Okay, yeah, I'll do it. Mayor, I nominate.
Yeah.
I'm trying to, I'm trying to make sure people get in there if they want to. Mayor, I nominate myself, Ben, Chelsea for the position of Finance Administration Committee Vice Chairperson with a term expiring May twentieth, twenty twenty-six.
Motion and a second. Do we have any further nominations for F and A Vice Chair? Seeing none, Robin, please call the roll. Chelsea?
Aye.
Carpenter Davis?
Aye.
Schmidt?
Aye.
Kring?
Aye.
Ryer?
Aye.
Loudon?
Aye.
Hayden Chompousi?
Aye.
Bonn?
Aye.
Motion carries. All right, congratulations to our new chairs and vice-chairs. Or in some cases returning, but we appreciate your leadership. Thank you. There being no further business items for consideration, we will move into comments from the City Council. This is an opportunity for comments from our council members. Does anyone on the council have something they'd like to share this month? Yes, Debbie?
As the year comes to a close, Wanda and I sit on the site council for Rushden Elementary. And I can tell you that there's not a meeting that goes by or not an event that happens that you don't see staff from this city involved in that community school. And they acknowledge it and the principal is very grateful for all the things that the staff in this city do to make them a better place. The kids know them. They know them by name. It's, that's a small city done well and the grade school is real important and those kids see respectability for adults in, in, in a world that is not always like that. So I just want to tell everybody in the staff how much we appreciate you being so involved. Dan has been here for the treeing. Dan and his staff have been there for all the meetings. I mean, it's, it's wonderful. Thank you.
I was actually out garage sale shopping and someone recognized me and they mentioned how often we're up at Rushden. So that was really great to hear. It's definitely, definitely noticed. Yeah, Brian?
Yeah, a couple of things. I had started doing just a tour of Mission on a scooter I bought a couple of months ago. And part of that was this weekend was to visit all the folks having a garage sale as part of the citywide garage sale in my ward. Lot of activity. They were all very excited to do it. The one comment I did hear from almost everybody was that they would like to see city promotion of the event, not just through digital channels, but physical ones as well. Sign, a banner, something like that, just alerting the public at large that this is a citywide event. So that was a little less reliant on their individual small garage sale signs. So that, I heard pretty consistently. I also bring this up because I will be visiting other wards. So if there are any members of the public who do see me driving around, it's a little green scooter. Please don't be alarmed. I'm not. I'm just there to take a look and not bother anybody. And then the, I had a question, actually. Do we know what is going on with SWIG? As it feels like this is a prime moment for them to be open and they're not.
Take it, Brian.
Yeah.
I, I'm sorry, I didn't hear the question.
SWIG, the status of SWIG, the soda shop at Broadmore and Martway.
Been under construction.
Oh, so, oh, yeah, 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 yeah. I know where you're talking about. Yeah.
Yeah, and I don't know.
That's fine.
I've been wanting to say anything myself. They're just taking forever to make the final touches on the building and the last little details before they get to CO. So, yeah, I'm curious. I expect it'll be any day, but yeah.
That was it?
We're hoping for advance notice because rumor has that the lines are miserable when they do open. So.
Yeah, for, for chief, when the day comes, my coworker who lives out in Lee Summit said there were like eighty line, eighty car lines for the first few weeks that their SWIG was open. So. Yeah.
Actually, I think that question may be eclipsing what's happening at the gateway site at this point in our lives.
What's happening with SWIG? All right, any other comments? Yeah, Leah?
I attended a Johnson County Area Agency on Aging meeting not long ago, which was fascinating. They were talking about how they are working through their five-year plan for our seniors in, in Mission and making sure that they are not in Mission and Johnson County to make sure that they're receiving, you know, all of the services and with the unknowns of the federal budget and cuts there, they're still hopeful that they'll be able to continue. There is a survey online for people who are interested in, in providing feedback, whether you're a caregiver, an aging person, or just someone who is concerned about our aging population. Through the course of discussion, someone had mentioned that Shawnee has a program called Safe Seniors where the city will give grants to seniors who want to stay in their home to help them stay in their home, whether it's providing grab bars in the bathroom or the shower, helping with ramps, that sort of thing. So I would really love it if we maybe looked into something like that here. We do have a lot of, of older folks that call Mission their home. And if you were to ask them, many of them want to age in place as long as possible. And we are a city that, that supports that sort of thing. So I'd like to see us maybe talk about that in a future session.
All right, any other comments tonight? We will move on then to our council committee liaison reports. So these reports allow the governing body to stay up to date with the various activities of our boards, commissions, and committees. First is council members Loudon and Hayden Chompousi for Sustainability Commission.
Yes, so we met at the sustainability meeting on May fifth. And we have a new member, James, and he's a lot of fun, active duty in the Army and very interested in, in being a part of, of Mission and, and the Sustainability Committee. We also, it was mentioned earlier that we had a guest speaker named Leslie Scott. She's with Reuseful, which is an absolutely amazing organization that kind of helps, helps keep things out of the landfill. So she will have undumpster days where people can bring the things that they don't want, but they don't want to throw away. And then not-for-profits and people that look for items such as that will come and, and they, they do the exchange. And it really does help to prevent, according to her, about twenty tons of things ending up in, in the landfill, which is, is very exciting. She's got a great website. If you want to go out there and take a look, I signed up, we're the stones who care to see if, if we could, could benefit from that. And then she's, also does repair cafes where people can bring things that are broken, jewelry, clothing, electronics, bicycles, lamps, and then there are volunteers who will fix them to, again, make sure that things don't end up in the landfill. We're lucky enough to have her come to our Go Green Environmental Fair and do one of her little fixer, repair cafes there. So very exciting. She also does Wednesday one-on-one webinars, everything from native gardens, backyard chickens. They're usually about an hour long. So if you want to enjoy learning something new or have something that you would like to share with others, you can contact her and she'll be able to hook you up. So that was the majority of our, our time was spent doing that. It was, it was wonderful.
Great. Right, next we have council members Kring and Schmidt for Parks Recreation and Tree Commission.
I think Nicole did a great job earlier of covering a lot of the bigger items. So I'll keep mine kind of confined to a few things coming up or something that wasn't covered. As of earlier this month, the, our new hours at the community center now open on Sundays from nine to five. Sounds like so far we're getting around a hundred scans each Sunday with some rentals. So it's great to have that back open. Also coming up, the first day, Thursday in June, which is June fifth, is the first Mission Market is reopening back up. So excited for that to happen. This was not covered in the meeting, but I will take that opportunity to just advocate for potentially looking. this was not covered in the meeting, but I will take that opportunity to just advocate for, um, potentially looking for, um, you know, more opportunities to potentially close down that section of Johnson Drive, um, to encourage, uh, just additional foot traffic. Uh, and just really activate that space as best as possible. Not arguing for every single Thursday, but for looking at maybe some key um, key Thursdays within, uh, the market season to, to test that out.
Great. Uh, next we'll hear an update from council members Ryard and Chelsea on Mission Magazine.
Last Thursday, no, it was Thursday before. Yeah, we had a good meeting, kind of chatting through some of the kind of advertising complexities happening. Um, and then kind of brainstorming on future themes because we love a theme. Um, I don't want to spoil it. I feel like it's fun to be, unless Ben wants to.
We have already, yeah, we've already mentioned in, in the, in, in open meetings about the musician issue. So that, that's shaping up really nicely and, and a lot of mind blowing list of, of musically inclined folks, uh, in and around mission and um, some impressive businesses and things as well. So that, that's, yeah, that's really cool. I won't spoil them. If you want to keep, keep everybody in suspense, I won't, I won't spoil.
I mean, obviously we'll be reaching out for a story. I guess that is some hopes, but we'll get there when we get there.
Yeah. We'll meet again on June twelfth.
All right.
I think.
Great, excellent. And finally, we have council member Carpenter Davis with family adoption committee.
Yeah, the committee is going to kick off in June and start working on the family adoption for the Thanksgiving and Christmas holidays. So looking forward to that.
Great. All right. Now we will move into my report and appointments. So we do have one new appointment this evening for the planning commission and he has sat through our entire meeting. So he definitely gets a gold star. For you, the appointment of Aaron Winger, Ward two to the planning commission with a term expiring December thirty-first, twenty twenty-five. Aaron is a longtime mission resident and already serves on our board of zoning appeals. So familiar, familiar with planning commission work. Do we have a motion?
Mayor, I move the city council uphold the appointment of Aaron Winger, Ward two to the planning commission with a term expiring December thirty-first, twenty twenty-five.
All right. We have a motion in a second. Aaron, since you made it all the way through, do you have any comments you'd like to make to council? If so, feel free to come on up. If not, that's fine too. Excellent, excellent. We, we have a motion in a second. Robin, will you please call the roll?
Schmidt.
Aye.
Carpenter Davis.
Aye.
Hayden Chumposi.
Aye.
Vaughn.
Aye.
Ryard.
Aye.
Kringle.
Aye.
Chelsea.
Aye.
Loudon.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you, Aaron. All right. Next we will move into our city administrator report. Laura, do you have anything you'd like to share with council tonight?
I do have a few things, but I'd ask Mr. Carroll to give a quick update on interim financials and then Ms. Fox, do you, yes, that's Europe. Um, do you have any new business updates? No, go ahead afterward. Okay. And then I have a couple when they're finished.
In your packets, you have the interim financial reports for both March and April. Um, so apologies for the missed month, last month for anyone that was waiting with bated breath. But just, uh, got a little backed up as we were finishing up the audit. So just look at through the reports. Uh, I feel like a broken record, but things continue to be the same. So revenues continue to just kind of, they've really kind of stagnated and I'm really referring to like our sales tax revenues. So we're not seeing the growth that we were accustomed to a few years before that, the last few years. But otherwise, if you turn the, um, the gigantic page in there, the full page chart, that's essentially what we would call our burn rate, which is how fat the expenditures that the city is going through. And so we're, we're holding steady on that part. If you look at average, uh, what, how many months out of the year we're at versus where we've actually spent our budget, we're below that threshold for both March and April. So we're holding steady on that front. But hopefully we can see revenue start picking up. But I've talked to some of, uh, our colleagues in other cities and other cities are seeing the same thing. So they're not seeing that growth's kind of just been eliminated. The county's seeing it on their revenues, which is obviously the whole county, but other cities are as well. So.
Thank you, Justin. Robin, exciting market updates.
Well, if you're anything like me, your dreams every night are about the market, but two weeks in one day till we kick off and eleven season of the mission market on June fifth at four thirty, the opening bell will ring. So, and we have some amazing vendors lined up. We've been working on some fun special events. So we'll have our market kickoff party the first week. We'll have a makers market on June twenty-sixth. So extra arts and makers, um, a lot of local makers, mission makers, which I think is really neat that we've gotten applications for. Um, and then on June, or July tenth, if you remember from last year, our friends at Kix BBQ had a birthday party at the market with a foam party. Uh, we weren't sure what to expect, but it was amazing. We'll be welcoming that again this year on July tenth. Um, farmers market week is the first week in August. So we'll have some fun giveaways and maybe a few scavenger hunters, something like that. And then we will celebrate back to school the following week, um, in August and some fun new vendors, a lot of returning vendors. And we welcomed a new special projects coordinator last week. So she is, um, slowly taking over the reins of the market planning and it's been a really great experience having her on board. Um, and we'll introduce you all to her soon. My only business update is that Fuh and the Bestie has opened at six two zero two Johnson Drive. And a lot of us are excited about that. Um, so be sure to visit them for drinks and food and kinds of fun things. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Questions for Robin?
Good job.
Thank you, council member Kringle.
Um, I think our judges, uh, for June committees are going to be a little bit lighter. So, um, we can look, have that sort of over to. I did just want to remind that we are having a work session next week. It was originally slated to be our first, uh, discussion of the twenty twenty-sixth or twenty thirty capital program. But we're planning on my part.
Who are on vacation next week. So does it make for a very effective discussion around our capital projects? So we have been talking about doing some security awareness planning with the council. Um, so we will be doing that next week in a special meeting. A portion of that will be a closed executive session and then we'll have a part of that's open session. We also will, um, need, excuse me, we've had, uh, kind of a collapse or a more emergent um, stormwater issue happening along Broadmore. Uh, and so we're, need to authorize a task order to get Olson looking at replacement of that. It's a front yard line. Um, Mr. Hawes, the mayor will be familiar with that and several of those properties along there. We just have CMP failure. Um, so we'll need to put that on and get the task order moving as well. And that just came to our attention most fully late this afternoon. Um, I would also like to say that I believe that we are now fully staffed here at city hall again, or will be by June second, right? So we'll look forward to getting you introduced. So we've added our new permit technician in Lauren Galv- Galvane. Uh, Courtney Capello is our new building official. Our new planner will be starting June second. Her name is Taylor Cunningham. Uh, as Robin mentioned, we have a special projects coordinator who, uh, Leanne Zare, who is also a mission resident uh, is on board. We interviewed market attendants. Um, and so I think things are looking really good and shaping up really well for, uh, the summer and kind of getting our departments back on their feet. So thanks to everybody who's picked up the slack and, um, taken on extra responsibilities as we've gotten those positions filled. And I think with that, I don't have any additional ones to. Six thirty PM.
Mm-hmm. All right. Thank you, Laura. Uh, we do not have the need for an executive session this evening. So before we adjourn tonight, I want to share with the public that the video from this meeting will be available through a link on our website at missionks.org. There being no further business tonight, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned.